So, uh, it's now about 5:37 maybe? And I called the public hearing to order. So, uh, this, okay. So hopefully everybody's here to talk about our ARPA funds and how we're gonna spend them, because that's the point. Uh, so I just did a quick PowerPoint that isn't very well laid out, but anyway, I just had some definitions. So that ARPA, um, is, is this the first slide? Slide? ARPA is the American...
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. So it's the American Rescue Plan Act from, and it has established a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery plan, which gave about $200 million to municipalities in Vermont. It was pretty recently that we got the final rule from US Treasury on how these funds can be spent. Next slide, please. So the, the big change with the final rule is that this, this changed to allowing us to spend the ARPA funds on government services, which is very broad and basically allows us to spend it on most municipal services that you could imagine. Infrastructure things, staffing, I mean, anything really, not, yeah, anything government service related. So, and in fact, I thought this was curious, um, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns' analysis suggests that any municipality may choose to use their entire reward, award to replace lost revenue, and you don't need to demonstrate a loss. So that's kind of how we get to the point where the money just kind of comes into the general fund, if you will. All right, so next, just to kind of frame the conversation and, and to think about things that we have going on, and this is where we hope to branch into discussion, is we have sewer plant upgrades that we did put out to bid that came in way over budget, and we were looking for funds that even spending all the ARPA funds on that project doesn't make that project whole. Uh, we've been known for quite some time that we need a new town highway garage. Our town highway garage is...
1972.
1972. Uh, its main issues are, uh, there've been issues with the roof leaking, and, um, so we contemplated fixing the roof, but there are posts in the building that hold the building up, and they are in between each bay for the trucks. And those bays are, the trucks have gotten bigger to a point where the bays are just too narrow, so they drive in and there is no room for error in the same front to back. They, when they drive into the plow, from the back plow touches the back of the building, and, um, you know, some people can't necessarily walk behind the truck, because it's that type.
And then there are heat issues as well.
Uh, we pumped a lot of heat in there, at least in recent years. So we had, there were heating issues. We added some propane heaters a couple of years ago, which get the building warmed up, but all that heat really just goes out into the world. Um, it's not very efficient. We just pump a lot of heat out.
Makes the leaky roof up even further.
That's exactly right. Uh, yes. Uh, there's the Judivine Library expansion, which many people are aware of, that also went out to bid, came in overbid, worked to reduce the gap there, um, but that project still, you know, is gonna go out to bid again, could likely use some funding. There's the Yellow Barn Business Accelerator, went out to bid, came back way over budget, needs some money, but, and again, this, even all the ARPA funds wouldn't come close to filling that hole. There's a swinging bridge that we are working on, um, to replace that failed, had a mechanical failure, where the cables broke. Um, and we do, we were moving ahead on that pretty well for a while last summer. It got stalled, um, for a while due to circumstances outside our control, but we think it's now moving again. Opie's been working, uh, with USDA to really get that project back on track. I, we don't know, but I suspect that that is also gonna come in over budget. There's a fair amount steel in that thing.
Yeah, because we thought it was funded, but...
We thought it was funded. It might be funded.
All of these things come in higher.
Everything's coming in higher when you actually bid it. There's the, um, fiber internet expansion, which Paul Fix has actually come to talk to us about, the community broadband, expanding community broadband. There's opportunity for the town to, um, to invest in that. The, this building that we're in, the memorial building, has a, it's a beautiful building with a beautiful slate roof that has been in need of repair for at least as long as I've been on the select board.
A decade, yeah.
And, um, and we'd need, now, this is something that's probably more manageable. We just don't have quite enough set aside to do it, but maybe it's something where like a few thousand could be put toward that and make it happen. Uh, the townhouse has a project for accessibility, but also the roof needs.
Yeah, the roof hasn't been addressed at all.
The roof needs. And I'm sure there are lots of other things. So anyway, that's, I guess at this point, I would like to open it up to input from folks who have come. If you could just state your name for the record, and comments, or, you know, additions, anything about this funding.
My name is Jody.
Great.
Go ahead.
Uh, so the project was on the list already.
So Jody, state your name.
I am Jody Lou Smith. I'm the chair of the trustees for the Judivine Library. We have been working a number of years to put on an expansion, and as Eric explained, it came in well over budget. We're going out to bid again. We think we're funded, but again, we're expecting it will come in over budget. And so I'm trying to plan for that contingency, and one of our hopes or ideas is that the, there is money for library capital projects coming through the State Department of Libraries, but that will be delayed. And so we may be able to have a pledge from that group, we're not sure, but we're, I'm looking to put in place some bridge funding essentially, to be able to sign a contract, and then hopefully not need those dollars if that library funding comes through. But at least until that comes through, we need those dollars available. So that's...
Do you have a timeline on, and you're gonna go out to bid, and when bids will be due?
Yeah, bids will be due middle of June.
Okay.
So contract signed middle of July. We may have more information on the state money by then.
Okay.
I hope to. And I certainly will ask if they will pledge that money, even if they can't actually allocate it. Then I did speak to them, they're a nice fit for what their mission guidance is, because, especially around accessibility. Um, so I, I don't have a good sense of what we need, and I don't have a good sense of what their grant range is gonna be.
Okay.
So I'm, we're trying to, yeah, juggle pieces.
So you're basically here to say we're still out there?
We're still out there. We are, you know, sometime in the summer likely to come and ask if there's a possibility for a bridge pledge or commitment of some sort. We wouldn't need the dollars until we absolutely, um, and if the bids come in way beyond, then we'll pull the plug. We're hoping...
Or reassess, yeah.
We'll reassess, but we're hoping they come in at a number that we can fill the cap.
Okay.
They're just gonna keep going.
Okay, so we'll know about, sorry, mid-June, you said?
We'll know more mid-June. We should have the bids in by then.
All right.
That's the goal.
Good.
Yeah.
All right.
That's it for me.
Others. Paul, do you state your name?
Paul Fix. I live here in Hardwick, and I'm a voter. Um, I'd like to start by asking the select board what the town has in mind as far as collecting ideas, and obviously this is a start, evaluating ideas, pricing them, working with the town to make them aware of what ideas are available, prioritizing them, and do we have objective criteria for this process? And I guess I should've said first, this is a significant amount of money. I think I know how much Hardwick is receiving, but for the purpose of this meeting, maybe you guys could state for the record how much money we're talking about, so the public's aware.
It's on the order of $850,000, but I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head.
It was like 822 or something.
I think that's, that's the number I've heard. So, so this is a real windfall for the town of Hardwick, and I think it's really critical that we have some objective criteria to evaluate this process. And so to the extent that you as a select board can guide decision-making in the town, I think it would be very helpful for us all to know what opportunities there will be, you know, how they will be priced and evaluated, who'll decide what percentage goes to what. So I just put that out there as something I think is important.
So I think, um, just to respond briefly, I think that this meeting and the next meeting are, you know, soliciting public input strongly suggest anybody who's interested, who's not here, or if you want to come again, to come again to our next, um, meeting, which is the fifth, is that right?
Yes.
Of May, and we'll do this again at 5:30. And we really are, this is a, this, so I put up a list of projects that the select board's aware of, and this is like soliciting feedback on which of these projects do you think are valuable for spending this money, which other things are, are not up there that I've overlooked, or that we haven't considered. And then I think, you know, ultimately, the select board is gonna decide how that money gets spent. It doesn't have to be spent right away. Um, and while it is a significant windfall for the town, I, I think that's absolutely true, but we're also in a time where, um, projects are just coming back so much over budget that almost any one of those projects on that list could take the whole amount and still not fill the gap. So even though we get $150,000, seems like a lot of money. If we put all that money to the sewer plant, we're still not building the project we thought we could build for much, you know, I think rough, roughly, we thought it was gonna be a $2 million project, and it's a $4 million project.
Yeah. The other thing is, we're gonna see things like our paving this year. We're not gonna get, I don't even wanna guess, but maybe a third less pavement for the money, you know, same with our gravel and sand, so, I mean, there's gonna be a lot.
There's still a lot of operational stuff that's gonna be...
Seems like a windfall, but there's a lot, there's a lot of holes that the wet things cost today, so. I, I hope you don't hear my question in any way suggesting projects not be done. And I think you're right, that a lot of them will go over budget, but it would, if something's $100,000 over budget, maybe this $100,000 would be good to cover.
Yeah.
But I think we need an objective criteria to evaluate what the projects would have been, how much they will be, to find some...
We need to see a lot of lists. Right now, we have, this is the list, so if people have things to add, that, that's the first step, if you see what the list of projects is, and then we can figure it out. Because we don't have an answer right now.
And a lot of things we don't even know the price of yet, like the swinging bridge, we don't know. The library, we don't know. Like, we just don't know what, I mean, pricing is so volatile. For parts of the Yellow Barn, the contractor was saying the, the firmest bid they could get was a 10-day price on things.
So anyway, these meetings, these meetings are, we're trying to create the list of projects right now.
Yeah, and I think...
And we'll definitely have to look at how we're gonna spend it at some point, but right now, we're trying to just gather up the ideas of what we should be thinking about.
Well, going on with that...
Oh, Norma, can you state your name?
Oh, I'm Norma Spalding. Um, what's the timeline? Is there a time that it's supposed to be spent?
Well, it doesn't have to be spent in any...
It does. I believe it needs to be allocated, um, in...
Sure, there is.
There is. I can't remember. It's not very soon.
It's like a year or something.
Yeah.
I think it's allocated in about a year, and I think we have another two years to spend it.
Two years.
But don't quote me on that, but that's just roughly where we're at in the cycle. So we have a while. There's nothing, there's no urgency really to spend it, it's, you know, we haven't...
Not decided.
No. So it just, you know, historically, before this final rule came out, there were very narrow categories that, that looked like we could spend it, and so we were thinking there aren't really many choices. The sewer plant is the obvious project, but now there are a lot, it could be lots of things, and maybe some of it goes to the sewer project, uh, maybe some of it goes somewhere else, and, or multiple work places.
Seems like one, one way to think about getting the biggest bang for the buck is, is plugging holes to get the most projects done.
Right. Either, either places where we could be the last dollar to get the project done, or places where it's a small thing that we don't have in our budget, but we could do the whole thing. So I'll just throw out, because I don't see her here, Rachel Kane emailed me today, I think, and suggested one thing for our discussion, is she'd really like to see some of those like flashing speed signs that give you speed feedback in East Hardwick on the hill, where people go downhill, and, you know, and that's something that we've, they're kind of expensive. Uh, I wanna say they're 12 grand.
It depends on what type you get.
But anyway, that's the type of thing that's interesting to ponder too, because that's something that's not in our budget, and...
Get a few of those.
You can maybe get a few of those things, and you actually do that.
Yeah.
And get the most done.
Yeah.
Right.
So other, other comments or ideas?
Sally and Steve, oops, sorry. Sorry. Um, those are basically my questions. It's kind of hunt and gather meetings right now.
Yep.
And how long do we have before we need to spend money, and how are you going to make choices, and what were the projects that were already listed? That, those were my basic questions. Would you answer?
Okay. Great.
I'm Carrie Michaels, East Hardwick. I'm actually here as, in my capacity, as a board member for the Craftberry Care Center. And, and my question is, what, whether, and I think, I think you answered this, or you haven't established any criteria yet, so I was going to ask about funding for nonprofits, if that's something that you may consider. Four C's are not in Hardwick, but Hardwickans represent the majority of our residents, and we, like everybody else, have lots of projects, some of which relate specifically to improved health aspects of the facility. I won't get into, I, I won't go any more detailed than that, we're way, we're way early. It's just a stake in the ground for considering where you are with nonprofits.
Yeah, so I don't know that we had considered nonprofits. I, so I'll have to go back and look. I, in the, to, just to me, my first blush response is that that probably doesn't fall under the general service, the governmental services umbrella maybe, but I do think I read something about being able to fund nonprofits, so I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. The way I read that list was those enumerated services, or put in the general fund, claiming loss of revenue, in which case it could be used for anything.
Essentially.
So, thank you.
Yeah. So that's another interesting...
I have another thing that I've always wondered about, and that is heating this building. And, you know, it's, it's like really cold in the winter, as you guys know, and we've got, we've got a beautiful space out there that essentially in the winter you can't use, because it's too cold. And, you know, with all the solar projects going on, it seems like this place could be retrofitted with heat pumps or something. Town clerk's, you know, the town clerk's office could be heated better, just because they have little electric heaters.
Yeah.
Anyway, so this building, I think...
Yeah, it's a beautiful building.
It's a beautiful building, but it's not being used.
To its greatest extent, yeah.
Even if we had it, but we're not.
Right. So that's a, that's a great point, I think. We, over the past years, have partnered with Efficiency Vermont to make improvements to this building, so there have been, there's been improved insulation in the attic, we replaced the boilers for the heater, so they're more efficient, and, but you're right, like, we don't have any cooling in here. It is, it's always gonna be a stone building, I think, and so it's always gonna be a bit challenging, but the idea of looking into, yeah, like a...
Big windows.
It's stone building with big, big old windows.
I know, but it's...
There are heaters, you're already hooked up.
There are no stone windows, because that project never got finished.
We are...
It's trapped in the day.
Yeah.
Oh, you are?
Yes. I mean, it would be nice to be able, for groups, be able to use some space in the winter.
In the winter, yeah.
And you really essentially can, and in the summer, it gets really hot.
Yeah.
Heat pumps would help solve some of that kind of problem.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just wanted to throw that one out there.
No, that's a, that's a good thought to, to, to another, take another look at this building for energy efficiency, and perhaps other ways to heat and cool it, yeah, or auxiliary methods for heating and cooling. It's a good idea? You're getting all this, right Amanda? Good? Because I'm not writing anything down, though. All right, other thoughts?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to talk about the sewer plant.
Yeah.
I know it's a big conversation, and I've read, uh, the Gazette reporting, I did not listen to your recent meetings, but I, I think there's a real question to ask about taking money designed to benefit the entire town and putting it towards the sewer plant, which directly benefits those people on the water and sewer system that have a separate means of funding themselves. And I understand that this, having the sewer plant benefits the entire town. I live in town now, so I would benefit from this, but as someone who lived in a more rural part of town, we had to deal with our own sewer plants, and there's not federal money to help those people. And they benefit the town too by not putting their sewage into the general environment, but putting it into a septic system or whatever system. So I think there's a real question about putting more than, let's call it a fair share into the sewer system. I can certainly see trying to fund cost overruns in the same way we might fund cost overruns for the library, or Newtown garage, or whatever, but, um, I just put that out there, that I think that's a conversation that the entire town really needs to have.
Sure. Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a valid point. I think that it's important to recognize, like, as you said, that the sewer system really does benefit the whole town, because without it, we wouldn't have a lot of the businesses we have in town.
Wouldn't have any businesses.
Well, you might have one or two.
Well, it, yeah, it's a major reason why we have what we have.
Right. The users, the users of the septic system pay for the usage of the septic system. The benefit of the sewer system benefits everyone in the town, because the town wouldn't exist, the library wouldn't exist if we didn't have a sewer system. There would be no commerce. Hargit could not exist without a sewer system, so that's why it's important to the whole town. The users of the sewer system fund the usage of the sewer plant. We pay to, to operate that through a user fee. We're talking about a capital investment in the town for everybody in the town, and it's just silly for me, for anyone, to think that that sewer plant isn't critical to every single person in this town, including East Hardwick. I, I think that's true. I, I would also add that those people in rural areas also fund the sidewalks and the streetlights, so they're paring their fair share of that infrastructure in the town already. So I, I just, there, there are a lot of moving pieces here, and, yeah, I wanna make sure we're recognizing that.
Jody?
I'm wondering if you've had any information around the infrastructure money that should be starting to flow at some point, because that bill passed, it's a very big bill. Um, as I understand, I think it's bigger than the ARPA bill, and I assume would be quite targeted to those projects, and it's maybe a timing issue.
Right. So there, so I don't, the short answer is I really don't know, but the, the more like wandering answer is that we have had discussions with our wastewater plant engineers, Aldrich and Elliott, who've informed us that there, yes, there's, there should be infrastructure money coming that would help fund the sewer plant, but it's, it's not well-defined yet. So, yeah, that's definitely something that we're taking into account with the whole sewer project is, well, there's, because the funding we had originally, when we thought it was a $2 million project, and we had this $2 million bond, was like a 40% subsidy on that $2 million. So that was, that was good, that was a good incentive, it was good, good funding, but we don't know yet what the, how that infrastructure money is coming.
And we could, we, we need that too.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, even if we are funding, we're, we're not funding, the sewer project isn't funded, so we need the infrastructure money as well as...
My suggestion was only that the infrastructure money might be more restricted than the ARPA funding.
Yeah.
And so targeting it to that impossible, we...
Well, yeah.
Strategy.
Technically, it already is targeted to that, whatever it comes in at.
Whatever it comes in at, right.
And that, the, and that sewer project is another one that needs to go out to bid again.
Right.
So...
It's probably not gonna be less.
It's, yeah, it's not gonna be less, as we know. Nothing's coming back to us.
I just have one more question. Could you explain what's happening with the swinging bridge?
Sure. So...
Tell us a little bit of funding that...
We thought we had lined up all the funding that we needed to do the project, and we had engaged a landscape architect and an engineer to work with us. We did a community input thing over by the Daniels Building.
Right.
Was well-attended, right?
Yeah.
And, um, and then we needed a contract signed with that group, with the architect and the engineer, to get the design in order to continue with like big permitting and stuff. So you need historic preservation, you need the, the being in the river permit, the, you know, all these things, but you need the design first to show people this is what we intend to do. And we had a little bit of a stumbling, stumbling block, trying to get one of our funders to agree to sign the contract with that. So, so the contract...
And then the architect died.
And why...
Sadly, in the middle of it, the architect died.
So, so now we're a little bit back on track. So like I said earlier, Opie's been meeting with some folks...
SE.
SE group for, to, to try to come in and help with the design, and working with USDA, who's now committed to getting contracts signed and getting the project back on track.
And the SE group is an architectural firm out of Burlington area, I guess. They, it's been, all of the information and the stuff from our public engagement process and the information that David Raphael had, based on ideas and design, those, that's all been passed on to them. So hopefully it all just kind of, we'll come together sometime.
So we had, I'm gonna just throw really rough numbers out there, but we had lined up, I think, five or $600,000, combining a bunch of sources, and that was based on an estimate we had, that must've been almost two years ago.
From the engineering study, yeah.
It was quite a long time ago.
Two years ago.
And we got an estimate for, just a real kind of a back of the napkin, like, if you went with a pretty standard design bridge, you know, it would be, I can't remember, it would, the bridge itself maybe was gonna be $300,000 or something, but then once you...
It's super relevant.
And then, but then you need somebody to design it, you need, you're gonna need the abutments rebuilt, you're gonna need permitting, you're gonna need the installation, and so we figured about 600, and we thought we were good. My guess is that in the current environment, it's not gonna be enough. But we're moving forward. We're gonna get a design, then we're gonna get the permits, then we're gonna get the thing out to bid, and then we'll see where we're at.
Standard operating procedure, everything these days.
And then we'll put it out to bid again.
So...
So if I could ask, at that public meeting, there were people who said, "Let's do a basic inexpensive bridge," and there were people who said, "Oh, that one in that picture looks great." How is the architect been given a charge from us as to what this bridge should come in, price-wise, design-wise, et cetera, or is that still up in the air?
So we're kind of...
We haven't got an architect under contract yet.
Right.
We're trying to get someone to work with us on it.
We were at that point, right after that meeting, we were ready to sign that contract and get some, you know, have him do some designs.
So you're waiting to hear back from an architect once he's under contract, with ideas and what prices might look like?
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Ideally, there'd be alternate choices.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, but we need, we, we were ready to do that in like August, and here we are.
A 606.
And a 606. Any, any other final, final words on ARPA? Not final, because we can do this again in two weeks.
Boy, great.
Or three? Or three?
Two.
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 Two weeks, everyone's voting for two weeks.
Yep.
The fifth, yeah.
The 28th is next week, the 5th is after that.
Thank you for hosting us.
Yeah, thank you all for coming, really appreciate it.